Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January 13th Board of Education meeting. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands revolution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to make a couple of just quick off-agenda announcements. First of all, we are playing a little bit hurt tonight that Dr. Keen is not here because of an illness. She has a respiratory problem and so she will not be attending and Dr. Freeman is battling an apparently not dissimilar problem and so he unfortunately this is a really bad meeting to have his the ability to speak at length limited, so we're going to do the best we can with that and I appreciate everybody's patience. The other thing I want to just announce is that as you the observant among you may have noticed that one of our board members is not present tonight, Dr. Moore physically he is not present, is in fact electronically present. He is currently in New Zealand on sabbatical. He is participating in the meeting by way of something called a Vigo, a robot if you will, pursuing and over the Internet. He is watching us and is able to communicate with us. This is a piece of equipment that we had for the school anyway relating to a special ed program and so we are able to use it for these meetings and Dr. Moore's absence, physical absence I guess, but he is able to move around with that, is able to see and hear what we are doing and is able to communicate with us as well. So we're delighted to have him participating from the other side of the world. He will, I think the minutes are going to reflect that he is present electronically. I think it's our intention that he that I think we're a little unclear as to what the rules are on voting, so I think if it comes to that bridge, we will cross it with the assistance of counsel, but I don't think we're anticipating anything critical about that tonight. I will note-
Hello everyone.
Dr. Moore, are you troubled at all by the fact that your machine is called Vigo? If you are a Star Trek One fan with the Viger that took over the Enterprise, or is that not a concern to you?
Say that again.
It's a Star Trek reference. I think you're probably too young is my hunch. Everybody, you know, the Viger was the robot that took over or attempted to take over humanity in Star Trek One, so I'm troubled frankly by the name of this thing, but it doesn't really matter. We have already been through all of the hal jokes in the Finance Committee meeting. We've been through the War Games jokes, so we're going to try to put a cap on those for the rest of this meeting, so but Dr. Moore, we're delighted that you can participate and would you raise your hand or something if you have a question?
I asked that, I think I just have to yell.
All right, so it's just like any other meeting in other words.
There's a way you can get the lights to flash, but I'm not sure what it looks like. There's a way you can get all your lights to flash for us to get attention, Chris.
All right, well, you work on that, Dr. Moore.
There it is.
Oh, there we go.
There it is. That's how you raise your hand.
All right, well, we'll try to keep an eye out for that. Will somebody on this side of the table let me know if he's got his hand up? All right, action on the minutes. First set of minutes, a regular meeting from December 9, 2013, and the executive session relating to an expulsion on December 12, 2013. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
They're moved.
Second?
Are there any changes, corrections, clarifications?
I did have something. There was a discussion of the administrator's contract. I'm not going to look on the page here. And we discussed the dates. It was important that we change the dates of the contract period to coincide with our year and I don't think it was correct. Oh, here we are, on page three of the December 9 minutes on item 9.1. I think in a couple places that August 30 needs to change to June 30.
The first year is to June 30th or the last year is to June 30th in the administrator's contract?
I can just make sure that we pull the dates-
Yeah, well, that's fine.
We'll pull the dates from the contract and insert the correct dates.
Great.
Okay. Anything else? All right, is it, did we make a motion? Yes, there is a motion made and seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Dr. Myers was the reviewer for the bills for the month of December.
Thank you. I reviewed all of the bills which amounted to $4,197,629.13. That is 40.95 percent of the budget as compared to 41.69 percent of the budget last year at this time. Going over all of the bills, I found nothing out of line, nothing extraordinary.
Hang on a second. What's the feedback from?
Well, I have to turn it up loud enough to hear him, so that's what I'm speaking about.
All right, well, let's maybe get the mic closer, would that help? Would that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Going over all of the bills, I found nothing out of line. We went over some of the warrants in our Operations Committee prior to this meeting.
[inaudible]
Okay. And we discussed various warrants, all of which were in line and of real no concern, so I would move that we accept the $4,197,629 expenditure for month of December.
I'll second that.
All right, any questions coming? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item five on the agenda is Public Forum for Topics on the Board Agenda and let me just make a suggestion, folks, there are obviously a lot of people here and there are, you know, no doubt the people that want to talk about items on the board agenda, I think primarily the budget, maybe also the calendar, and there is a place on the budget later relating to public questions and that would be the place to handle off-agenda items. Tonight's agenda is really revolves in substantial part around the budget and Dr. Freeman's presentation of the initial budget to us and then we do have, you know, we certainly want to hear from people tonight, but we do also have two full meetings dedicated strictly to the item, to the concept of public input on the proposed budget before we vote on it. And that is going to be on January 27th and January 28th in the evening at Adams Middle School, so I certainly don't want to cut anybody off obviously, but there is going to be a very substantial opportunity on those two dates to talk about specifically budgetary concerns and budgetary items. I know that under Communications we'll talk about, we did get some discussions about the smarter balanced testing that is scheduled for later this year and I know and I just want to, again, we're happy to hear from anybody on that at the appropriate time, but Mr. Masenti I know is preparing a plan that will take into account as best he can those concerns as well as the, I guess I'd call them the concerns of the state, but it's maybe an understatement, the mandates of the state and try to balance everything that we're trying to balance in terms of what we have to do under the state program as well as what we're trying to do here locally. And so, again, don't want to cut anybody off, don't want to discourage anybody from speaking, but there will be plenty of time. I think Mr. Masenti has even considered to talk to Dr. Freeman about possibly doing an evening meeting here just on that issue before a program is adopted by Mr. Masenti or by the administration, so again, that I think would be a very productive process to follow, but again, if people want to, if people want to comment at the appropriate time, we're happy to do it. So, the agenda items, I think that are, and let me say one other thing, if people want to comment about a budget item, it might be better, and we can do this, we can switch this around on the agenda, it might be better to wait until actually Dr. Freeman has presented his budget proposal until people comment on it, because right now you may be commenting in a little bit of a vacuum and unless you've gone to the website and downloaded the budget, you know, it may be more useful to talk about it after Dr. Freeman's presentation. So, that's a long way of saying if people have public comments on agenda items and don't want to wait until after Dr. Freeman has presented the budget, at which time we will reopen it to public comments on budget items, that's fine, or if you want to wait, that's fine too. So, what, is there anybody that wants to address the board on an agenda item at this moment as opposed to waiting until after Dr. Freeman's presentation? No? Okay, then we will, we will come back to that. Communications, I know everybody has received substantial number of communications, both I think all day kindergarten, the testing regimen, I may ask you to comment on that, Dr. Freeman, the testing issue, maybe under your report before you get to the budget.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Does anybody want to summarize any of the communications that they've had?
I think that, just in regard to smarter balance, I think there's at least several parents concerned about are doing field testing with smarter balance and questions specifically about the impact on juniors at the high school, given the number of tests that juniors tend to be involved in throughout the year and certainly in the spring, AP, SAT, AP, et cetera.
Very happy to comment on that.
And it sounds like you're going to be conducting one of that.
Yep, and may in fact invite Mr. Masenti to join me in comment.
Okay, anybody else want to, I mean, I know we've gotten a lot of communications on all day kindergarten, I think everybody has got the same, effectively the same, you know, I think for at least my experience is that they can break them down into basically one of five categories. One being, why are you still talking about this? You should have voted to do it 10 years ago. The second, it's a good idea, let's just do it this year. The third is, well, I'm glad you're looking at the benefits and the costs and keep doing that. The fourth is, what's the matter with you? Why are you doing this? And the fifth is, don't do it under any sets of circumstances. I think that's fair to say, right? And there is a little, I think I've had a couple of emails that may suggest a little bit of a misconception about what we're looking at. We are not looking at expanding a pre-kindergarten program. There is a pre-kindergarten program at Guilford Lake School that is a mandate of the state and the federal government under the special ed program. The non-special ed children that are in that program pay a market rate that we were, the board was actually insisted on some years back before your time, Dr. Freeman, but we thought that it was not appropriate to subsidize non-special ed students in that program. And it's been a great program and I think it's been a real success in terms of trying to educate our children adequately, but also to hold down special ed costs moving forward. But that, there is no plan, no discussion, no requirement, no thought about expanding that program at all, period. And so what we're talking about now is possibly expanding kindergarten from what is now a half-day to match the regular school day for all of the other grades. So I just want to clarify the language and that is what, that is the issue now. Just, and just the number of children in the pre-K program at Lakes, the special ed population is I think 15-ish, somewhere in that area, and the regular ed kids are about 15, but again, they pay market rate.
Right, total enrollment has never exceeded 50, typical peers and students with special needs.
So, okay, so other communications? Anybody else get any other communications?
I've been involved in some ongoing communications with parents regarding high potential learners, particularly about the math program, and I did have a question that I was asked to pose regarding the timeline for sequencing changes for math and science at the high school, whether that has been finalized or-
Yes, we have a new math sequence that is posted in this board's Dropbox shared folder and it is a series of routes that students can take to all of our math classes, including the highest math class that we offer at this time, which is AP Calculus BC. And the changes that are mapped there are changes that will be made in advance of the current sitting eighth graders. The students who are in the current eighth grade were the students who experienced last year the changes to the seventh grade curriculum. And so we have taken all of our math courses, we've reviewed all of the prerequisites, we've looked at all of the opportunities that students have to move to those highest levels, and we maintain multiple routes for students to make it to AP Calc BC. In fact, at this time, we are doing the same analysis with all of our science courses.
And that was mostly the question, right?
Yeah. Science courses do at times have prerequisites that tie to math experience, so we have met with the department chair of the Science Department to go over all of those math changes and at this time, the principal, the assistant principal, the chair of the Math Department and Science Department are working on the course of study for this year so that we are not in any way limiting the opportunities that we currently have. Students can still reach AP Calc BC and students can still reach all of the science courses that we do have available, not in the same way that they have been able to do so in the past.
Okay, any other, any other communications, student representatives? What's going on?
Well, I'll kick it off with things going on in the high school. We have midterms coming up next week, next Tuesday, the 21st through the 24th, and to go along with that, Go for Free Library is opening their doors again for us, staying up until 10 o'clock, letting us bring in food, drink, and anything else we need to help us study for our midterm exams. Third, we have the new high school is cruising right along. The steal's going up. It's a lot of fun to watch those guys work out there every day. They actually have flooring going down too, so it's really starting to take effect. Winter sports are obviously in full swing. The basketball team's playing in the gymnasium right now. Wrestling's doing well, girls and boys ice hockey, fencing as well as skiing. Fifth, we've actually been lucky enough to have three students that have been selected for the CT State Scholastic Art Competition and Kyle Bianchi won the gold award for, the silver award, excuse me, for painting. Amy Lomington won the gold award and Mabel Bartlett won the gold award for ceramics. And their art will actually be on exhibit in Hartford on the 12th through the 31st of January. And we had another advisory class today and today we went over study skills for midterms, which was very helpful actually. Another thing we talked about with Mr. Masenti is that advisory is not only a thing to go over bullying and study skills, but it provides the students with a sort of outlet to address any problems, to have a connection with an advisor that they meet with every month so they can address any problems they have regardless of what it is. And then seventh and finally is the seniors have been hearing back from colleges and that's always big to hear, you know, when your friends are going to go to school, where they may end up, who you're going to go to school with next year, so that's been all the buzz around the high school.
And although these two are too humble to announce where they have been accepted to, but Gabby has been accepted to Harvard University and Fred has been accepted to Assumption with a nice financial package of $40,000.
Terrific. Congratulations.
At Guilford Lakes, the High School Voices came in December to perform and that was followed by an all-school sing-along. Recent fill-the-bucket training included two school assemblies and a staff training after school and this program is designed to promote a positive school culture by doing or saying kind things to each other to fill the buckets. There was the first math night at Guilford Lakes on January 30th and that was a night where students, or it will be on January 30th, and students will be invited to bring a parent and demonstrate the type of mathematics work that they do every day. Teachers have volunteered to plan and host varying grade level activities. At Melissa Jones, last week's cold weather made a lot of indoor recess for students, but the school stayed nice and warm. There were, there are two new enrichment sessions starting up. There will be chess on Monday mornings and martial arts on Wednesday mornings. In the kindergarten through second grade classes, students are working on opinion writing. Actually, it looks like grades three and four are looking on, working on opinion writing too. And grade three is finishing up the marine animal unit and fourth grades are working on child labor. And report cards will be sent home on January 24th. Kindergarten registration is on Friday, February 28th for the 2014 to 2015 school year. And a couple of things to thank Melissa Jones PTO for are the ice skating day that's coming up on January 20th, on the day that we have off from school at Northford Ice Rink, and also they earned $515 for box tops for education this last quarter and more than half a million points with Big Y Education Express, so they will use the points to replenish PE and recess equipment.
I spoke to Mr. Augustine from AW Cox and he wanted me to let you guys know that there's lots of rigorous learning going on at Cox. First graders are learning about their family heritages, second graders are working on creating science experiments, third graders are finishing their ocean animal reports, and fourth graders are finishing up their animal research papers.
And hopefully they're getting their windows and doors. Soon.
Soon.
Okay, anything else?
That's all we got.
Okay, any questions, anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
You too.
All right, Dr. Freeman, item eight on the agenda is, first of all, your budget presentation.
Before I do, I'd be happy to comment on the S-Bac testing, the smarter balanced testing.
Sure, you want to do that now, sure.
I know, and I do want to apologize, I'll probably apologize repeatedly for speaking with a cough drop in my mouth, but I think it's better than speaking over the cough. I know I reminded Board of Education members today, but I think it would be helpful to remind the whole community about where we stand currently with smarter balanced assessments as opposed to CMT or CAPT assessments as we have participated in in the past. For some years now, we have participated in the Connecticut Mastery Tests at the elementary and middle levels and in 10th grade, our students have taken the CAPT test. Next year, Connecticut will be shifting to the smarter balanced assessment in all school districts. It is a requirement, it's a mandate, and the smarter balanced assessment next year will be delivered in grades three through eight as the Connecticut Mastery Test has been, but the smarter balanced assessment will test, will assess 11th graders, not 10th graders. Remember that the smarter balanced assessment is in alignment with the Common Core State standards, which have been adopted by states across the country, and across the country we have had a patchwork of assessments and grade levels at which they have been delivered. All 11th graders participating in Common Core State Standards will be assessed across the country, so that's a change for us and it's a change that is mandated next year. Earlier this year, in fact, it may have been towards the end of last school year, Connecticut accelerated their timeline and school districts were offered an option. We knew that we would be shifting to smarter balanced next year and we assumed that this would be our last year of administering the CMT and the CAPT, which have now been dubbed the legacy tests. We have shifted our instruction to focus on smarter balance. Two years ago now, we've been working towards, moving towards this new assessment. The option that was offered to states, the option that we were offered in Connecticut was to choose one of two testing scenarios. We could choose to continue to give the CMT and the CAPT this one last time, but we knew that we were moving away from that, or because preparations for the smarter balanced assessment have been moving ahead of schedule, we were offered the opportunity to administer instead this year a field test of the smarter balanced assessment. It will not be the complete computerized live assessment or interactive assessment that we will have next year and the grades will not count. The scores that the district achieves on that assessment will not be used as part of teacher or administrator evaluation, will not be used as part of the SPI or DPI, the School Performance Index or District Performance Index, by which schools are now being ranked and sorted. We had brief conversation about this at the Board of Education. I do want to say it was only brief conversation. At the time, it appeared to be a fairly obvious consideration and I came forward strongly making the recommendation that I thought it would be in the best interest of the greater district to make the shift sooner rather than later, knowing that we've shifted our instruction, knowing that we will be measured by this new assessment and having the opportunity for one year to have our students experience the assessment without the scores counting made sense to me. Of the 168 school districts in the state, more than 150 made the same choice that we have made. Most of the school districts in the state, the vast majority will be administering the field test. As a leadership team, we talked about the impact. We are now beginning to get more information about the assessment windows. The smarter balanced assessment is very different in administration than the CAPT or the CMT was. The CMT was a set number of questions, you bubbled them in with a number two pencil and it was very strictly structured. In fact, we knew exactly on what day all students of any given grade level would be taking the writing assessment because those writing prompts were very strictly controlled. Smarter balanced assessment will ultimately be an individualized, computerized assessment. Students will essentially all be taking an individualized assessment, so two students sitting next to each other wouldn't be doing the same, the same test, the same assessment. The administration will be much broader. There will be a large window, a period of weeks at the end of every school year where districts may administer that assessment. We sent out a communication this week to each principal. Some of the principals have already moved that communication out to parents indicating some of these broad details that I've just explained and what the testing windows will be. Within those broad windows, each building is designing an individual schedule. Mr. Masenti has not yet sent out the high school schedule, so the details of what will happen within the assessment window have not yet been distributed. We won't be testing students every day through the whole window. It's a range in which we may give the assessment. I believe that the high school intends to be testing for approximately four days and it is not four full days of testing. It's a couple hours in the morning followed by full schedules, so although the classes will be shortened, they'll be truncated somewhat, all the classes will continue to meet and students will continue to cycle through. I think because the broad communication went out, there was some particular concern around the juniors for good reason. These students took the CMT last year and now they will be asked to participate in the field assessment of smarter balance this year. They're sort of getting hit twice and it's only because they fall within that transition window. And we do know that junior year is an important year. There's a lot happening for these students and we will do everything at the high school level to manage that schedule and minimize the impact of that schedule and I think the concerns that have been shared are valid and I think that they've been listened to well at the high school and I know that as Mr. Masenti and his team put the schedule together, they'll do the best that they can to move through this process. That being said, I do need to remind the board and the community that our options are limited. We are required to participate in Connecticut statewide standardized testing. We don't have an option to just administer the smarter balance at the elementary and middle levels, but stick with the legacy test at the high school. We don't have the option to do a small sample of 11th graders. The expectation of the state is that all 11th graders will participate and I am unaware of any vehicle that the state has in place to allow us now to go back and change our decision, having made it earlier this school year and reported it to the state of Connecticut. I will continue to work with Mr. Masenti. I know that he and his team will continue to produce the best schedule that we can produce, but those are the realities around this situation as best I know. To some degree, our decision has been made and it's beyond our control at this point. To some degree, our decision was limited from the get-go. We had one of two choices and to some degree, it is a transition year and we made a choice that would position the district best moving forward, knowing that it places one group of students in the unenviable position of having been tested twice in two years. So I don't know if board members want to pursue individual components of that more specifically, or if Mr. Masenti would want to share any more details around the high school plan at this time.
Do people have questions, concerns, issues?
Dr. Freeman, from what you said, it's not possible then for it to be voluntary this year, per student?
No, no, that was never one of the options afforded by the state. There's an expectation that we would participate in one of two of the standardized assessment models, either the old one or the new one. We chose to participate in the new one. There has never been an option for students to voluntarily participate. In fact, districts are held to participation rates and part of our performance and ranking on these tests as a district is tied to our participation rate, our ability to have all of our students complete the assessments.
And, well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Are we being tested on, or is this a field test on process or process and results? So obviously the scores don't count, but is there a sense that kind of a review of the scoring is part of the field testing, or a view of test scores is part of the field testing, or is this really about how does this roll out? How is it implemented? How does, how does the process work with computers and kids and school systems?
I think realistically, it's probably all of the above. I think that there is a logistical component to it. I think that there is a content component. I know that- I know that they're still attempting to validate items. I think that-
So that's scoring?
Right, right, but I, well, and right, and I also think that although the scores will not count, should there be a report, there will be no stopping communities and the state from looking at those scores and saying, "So we know this didn't count, but first time out of the gate, it looked like Town A did this and Town B did that." There will be no avoiding those comparisons, although I don't believe it is intended to be counted as an official baseline, but there'll be no way avoiding it being looked at as an unofficial baseline. And then, I think most importantly, and again, this does not apply to the juniors, but I think experientially, it gives our students an opportunity to experience what this new assessment is going to be like. Students who have been taking the CMT from third grade through seventh grade will be looking at something very different, as they said, as eighth graders. So we have tried at every, at every option to, when we have had released items, when we've had the practice tests, we have made an effort to put those items in front of our staff members. We've had faculty meetings where we're running our teachers through practice tests, and we last year put students through a practice test. So to help the students who are going to continue through this, to have an earlier, less high-stakes exposure to it was important to us, and I do recognize that that argument cannot be applied to the 11th graders.
For towns that are doing the legacy tests this year, so for giving, are they giving CAP to the 10th graders?
Yes.
So are they in the same position next year, their 11th graders have to take the new test?
Yes, so district-
So A class is going to take it twice?
Someone's going to be in this position. If it was not our 11th graders this year, it would be our 10th graders this year who would take, right, exactly. If we had held on to the legacy tests, our 10th graders would take the CAP this year, and then next year they would be expected to take the Smarter Balanced as 11th graders, but the scores would count.
Right, I mean, I think, I imagine, I should not speak for other people, but part of the question about could we somehow deal with the juniors this year was in fact because for them the test isn't really a real test, whereas kids next year would be.
They're getting ready for something that they'll experience again. And the 11th graders, we can't make that argument that we're helping them get ready for something which they will-
That if we're field testing, can we avoid retesting the kids?
Well, it is a real test, and it is going to give us data that I suspect the administration would be interested to learn.
Yes.
You know, that, for example, we get that on these tests all the time, that there's a problem in the way we're teaching some math component in fourth grade.
Well, and that's why I asked about whether this was a field test for scoring, as well as process. If it was simply process, then it would be great to have our sophomores try it out this year, and then as juniors take it next year. If in fact, it's about process and results, then it's important to have-
Yes.
-the age group that will be tested next year, be the age group.
Exactly. Those results will help us to inform curriculum, instruction, and even the new supervision and evaluation processes, because these scores are now going to be integral to all of those things moving forward. So the scores may help us to look at the decisions that we've made with planning moving to this point, and that is the cohort at the high school level that will be measured. We will be asking 10th graders to take this as well this year. So 10th graders this year won't be taking the CAPT, but we'll be asking them to take it. So we are administering to two grade levels of the, at the high school, we're required to administer to, and I may be divulging information that Mr. Masenti was going to share next week, but as, if we're talking about it, it's important to get this out. We do think it's important for our 10th graders, who will be taking it next year as 11th graders, to have that experiential component, and it has never been unusual for school districts to have ninth graders take a practice CAPT test.
Which we've done.
Yes, and so we will be, we will be exposing our 10th graders and our 11th graders to the assessment. We're required to expose the 11th graders.
If I can just make a suggestion, we do have, we're about, you know, 35 minutes into the meeting, we do have the budget presentation, and maybe we can circle back to this issue if people have other comments, but I really, I think we'd like to start talking about budget.
Sure. So I'll step over to the podium. Mr. Masenti, can you bring some of the lights for the projector?
And if people, if people, can people see the screen, or is it impossible?
We can move.
Okay.
The angles.
Well, if the, I mean, we can move, the board can move.
Yeah, we can move, and then-
So, you know, maybe, maybe our AV specialist can move the screen.
Yeah, I can go find it from here, I'll carry it.
Is it? Okay, great.
Thank you very much. I will apologize again for my voice and for the occasional coughing. I'm supplied with water and cough drops. I'll apologize for speaking over the cough drop. This is not the first time that this Board of Education has met to discuss this budget. I'll remind you that we have had meetings with the leadership team to talk about the important components moving forward with this budget. We have had a public hearing where members of this community came out to speak about what they wanted to see included in this budget moving forward. We've had a meeting with the Board of Finance, where we have talked about these important components moving forward. This is the first public presentation of this budget, including detail and including numbers. I will remind the board that every budget is a reflection of our value, it is a reflection of our vision and our mission. Every budget build starts by revisiting our vision and our mission. Our vision in this community is of a professional learning environment, where instruction invites effort and supports academic rigor for all students and educators. In this school district, we believe that instruction invites effort, and equally, we believe that effort builds ability. Our mission is to foster excellence in a respectful and challenging academic environment that leads to a lifelong passion for learning and the realization of each individual's highest potential. From that vision and mission, every year, this board selects a set of priorities on which to specifically focus. We hone those down, and this year, we have focused on our students first. All students will experience academic rigor every day in every class. There's three components to that. One is it ties directly to the work that is immediately in front of us, as we tie our curricula and our instructional strategies to the Common Core State Standards that were adopted by the state of Connecticut, and towards which every district in the state now aims. Additionally, in this school system, that rigor is integrated with the principles of learning, a historic document in this school system, a set of beliefs about learning that this school system has embraced for the last seven years, and that work will be measured by observations that will be viewed through a local document created last year, the Guilford Framework for Teaching and Learning. When we complied with the new expectations, with the new mandates around teacher certification and evaluation, we did not do so by selecting the off-the-rack plan that was designed by the state. We built a specific plan, and around observations in the classroom, we built a specific tool for administrators to use when viewing what happens in the classroom, and simply stated, that tool looks more carefully at what the students are doing than at what the teachers are doing. We're looking at the tasks that are engaged in, in the classroom, and we're looking at what our students do every day. Additionally, we talk about how we will support that work, and that work of learning will be supported through subject area coaches, more specifically, or more broadly, that means job embedded professional development, delivered at the classroom level, not by sending people out for in services, by intensely focused, instructionally centered leadership, by principals and assistant superintendents and special education directors and associate superintendents who are in the classrooms, looking at teaching and learning and talking about teaching and learning, building instructional conversations, and by professional learning communities, again, a historical component in this district, teachers relying on teachers as professionals and collaborators to improve their practice in the school system. And additionally, our schools will continue to be safe and caring places for learning, both physically safe and emotionally safe, where students are both protected from harm, but also learn how to make safe and healthy decisions for themselves. Those were the priorities that this board set out for the school system this year. Those are the priorities upon which this budget is built, and when you take our instructional priorities and put them in place to start making budgetary decisions, this was how we chose to translate them as budget priorities. First, we need to make sure that every decision and every investment continues to provide that safe and healthy school environment. Second, we need to ensure that every dollar spent continues our intensive focus on instruction. That means a focus on professional development. That means taking the work of the Common Core State Standards seriously and thoughtfully. That means continued support for the work that we have done around special education students within the school system, and that means continued support for the new teacher and administrator evaluation models that we roll out. We have worked hard to integrate these components into what can become a recognizable unified whole, rather than alphabet soup for the people who work in the district and the parents who bring their students to the school system. Additionally, and I have always said that we are not standing still, but a budget priority is to continue to make sure that we look for opportunities to expand the opportunities for our students every day. What more can we add for the students of the Guilford schools? We can be better. We are an exemplary school system, but there are always areas where we can improve, there are always services that we can enrich, and in some of those areas, we will talk about supports like full-day kindergarten, supports for our highest achieving students, and the International Baccalaureate Program. I'll touch on each of those as we move forward. And additionally, in this budget, it is a priority that we continue to be creative and thoughtful and tireless in looking at how we use our resources. So this budget is not an exercise in taking what we're doing this year and adding some new components for next year. We're looking at how we can restructure, how we can reorganize, how we can do some things differently to lever leverage greater performance, but maybe at a greater efficiency, and so we always strive to be, to be creative and to be innovative in how we assign the resources. All of that being said, the budget that we, oh, I apologize, it's also built on enrollment. The bottom line is, we also have to budget, we have to plan for the students who we anticipate to come to our door. Our budget projections for next year are essentially flat across all areas. We project to increase by approximately six students. This is at the end of a four-year cycle of some reduction. We are down some students over a four-year cycle. We're down approximately 100 students, 140 students over four years, but we're level year to year. So all of that being said, the budget that we present tonight represents a total budget request at this time of $56,933,248. That is the administrative budget that we bring before the Board of Education. This board now has some weeks where we will work together on this budget. It represents an increase over our current fiscal year of $2,388,062, or a percent increase at this time of 4.38%. This is higher than the budget that I had hoped to bring before this Board of Education as I stand here tonight, and as we go through, I will explain what areas lead this to be higher than I had hoped to bring before you tonight. The budget starts on efficiencies. When I talked about being innovative in how we use our resources, I want to applaud the Board of Education, the leadership team, and the teachers right down into every classroom over the efficiencies that we have generated in this budget, and the way that we have repurposed resources and approached things differently. I want to first point out that the area of salaries, while it is our single largest expenditure, it represents in the ballpark of 60% of our overall budget. Educating students is a people-intensive process. We have people in the classrooms with these students. We have people running the kitchens and preparing their lunches, keeping their rooms clean and running, doing the yeoman's work of keeping a school office running every day. It takes people to run effective schools and to teach kids. Salaries are our single largest and single most important expenditure, and yet, they are increasing at a rate that is well within reason. We have negotiated fair and competitive contracts with a couple of the bargaining units in this district, contracts that are holding up well as other communities settle with their employees, and we have some contracts yet to complete. We are at the end of two years of significant retirements, and I applaud the principals and how they have thoughtfully hired people in behind the retiring educators who have gone out. We have had talented and experienced educators who have left us, and we have stripped, we've made every effort to accomplish two things when we replace those positions. One is to match the talent and to bring in people who are ready to go when they walk into a classroom with students, but at the same time, to recognize an efficiency, and so we're an ever possible, when a teacher has retired at the top of our salary scale, we have been able to hire teachers who are at a lower step in the salary scale, so that we're bringing enthusiasm, we're bringing talent, we're bringing energy, but we're also working to keep an eye on that salary line. And we have continued to monitor the enrollment adjustments that I have made. So as we have made investments in important areas, we've looked at class size, we've monitored it closely, and we have made adjustments to, based on enrollment, at each school. We've made adjustments over the last two budgets that I've been here with you, and I know that there were significant enrollment adjustments made in the budget or two before I came. Salaries has been an area of focus, and it's an area where we have kept costs contained and avoided costs moving forward. Tuition, and when we speak about tuition in a public school, we primarily speak about tuition for special education students who we choose to outplace, to send to specialized schools outside of our community for services that the district doesn't feel prepared to deliver. I'm particularly proud of the efficiencies that we have achieved in the area of tuition. I tip my hat to Mrs. Brown and to her special education team, and to the principals, and to the classroom teachers who have worked at building our local capacity to keep more of those students here at home with us in Guilford. We are sending fewer of our students this year out for that special kind of support. We are teaching those students here at home in Guilford. We have had to invest space and staff members and materials to do that, and I firmly believe that we have improved the experience for those students and generated efficiencies, and in fact, lowered our special education expenditures as a result of this work. I have a slide following this one where I would detail that efficiency a little more specifically for you. We've also done work in the area of transportation. We negotiated a very favorable bus contract renewal last year, and on top of that renewal, by reducing the need to send students to other communities outside of Guilford, we will be spending less money in transportation next year than we are spending this year moving forward. It's not just a cost avoidance, it's an actual savings that's been generated in this area. And in the area of supplies and materials, while you will see some increases in this budget, I want to point out that we continue to remain at or below 2010 levels in spending in that area. So the materials that we are purchasing to bring into the classroom, principals are spending frugally. They are being thoughtful, they are being careful. We're printing on both sides of paper, we are reusing materials, we're doing everything we can to keep that cost area contained. Let me go back to special education and tuition for a moment. This budget proposes a tuition line that is $823,000 lower than the budget line that we have in our current budget. We are not just leveling our tuition spending, we are reducing our tuition spending by a significant amount. The tuition save, the transportation savings that is related just to the outplaced students is $490,633. I said that we have invested in staffing. To hold those students in district, we added five and a half teaching positions last year. We came to you late in last year, last school year, we were able to do it within the existing budget, but we added five and a half teaching positions. We added an administrative position last year, half of which we did through this budget process, and half of which we added later in the year through the tuition efficiencies. In the budget we will share with you tonight, we'll be asking for an additional teaching position. All of those staffing expenditures are covered by the half a million dollars represented there, which allows us to represent a net reduction in special education spending, particularly around the area of outplacements of $813,000. And again, I will say, and I believe at the same time, that we have improved the instruction for those students. They no longer spend time on buses driving outside of their community, they are now educated in their home schools, they're educated with their neighbors, they're educated by our Guilford teachers, and we have control over those programs, and I think Mrs. Brown would agree with me when we have talked to parent after parent after parent this year, who have been very pleased with the services that we're offering in those students. I can't tell you how proud I am of the efficiencies that we've generated in this area. Despite the fact that we worked hard to generate efficiencies, we have cost drivers this year. There are going to be costs in the budget that work against the efficiencies that we recognize. While I think that we have done yeoman's work in the salary area to control the cost, it is still the single largest area of expense. There is still increase, and so salaries this year are increasing by $1,039,133. That figure includes- That figure includes funding for a full-day kindergarten. So as I continue to go through this budget, we'll talk about full-day K more specifically and in greater detail. But that salary increase includes that funding. The other area of specific, uh, significant increase for us this year falls in the area of medical insurance increases. We have a medical insurance this year of over two million dollars. It's a result of medical costs, uh, insurance costs increasing. It's a result of our local experience and how the insurance company scores and rates that experience and gives you the increase moving forward. We have not accepted this figure. We continue to work with this figure, but my presentation was due to you this evening. So tonight, that is the dollar figure that represents our medical insurance increase at this time. Those two figures alone, when you combine those figures, the salary increases that we are proud of but are necessary, the medical insurance that we wished we didn't have to absorb this year, but we do, those two increases alone represent an increase of three-million, one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars. I'll remind you that our overall budget is only increasing by two-point-three million. So just those two areas alone represent an increase greater than the increase we're asking for in this budget. The efficiencies that we have worked on, that we've talked about, offset these two costs for us as we move forward. I'll say again that this is not, however, a status quo budget. We're not just looking to absorb the new costs, absorb the unavoidable costs and then move forward. In addition to those cost drivers, this budget does include intentional investments. We present these investments to the Board of Education for your consideration moving forward. In our administrative budget, this proposal includes this list of investments. And I'll take a little bit of time to touch on each of these. The board has already heard about these in your meetings with the leadership team and in your public hearing. I'll spend some time to discuss how and why each of these has made it into my proposed budget to you. We have heard clearly this year that there is community support for full-day kindergarten. At this time of a hundred-and-sixty-eight school districts in the state of Connecticut, over a hundred-and-thirty have full-day kindergarten. We are one of the few remaining school districts in the state that does not have full-day kindergarten. We have collected research, we have been talking about this topic, um, for the last two years seriously. When I met this Board of Education, um, when I met this community formally for the first time in this room, a community member stood up and asked me what my opinion of full-day kindergarten was and how quickly would we bring it to this community. With the advent of the Common Core state standards, we now have greater expectations for our students in kindergarten than we have had previously. I do believe that we owe it to our youngest students to give them the most time that we can afford them to meet the expectations that we place in front of them. I do believe that with full-day kindergarten, our students will be better prepared for first grade. I think that they will be better prepared academically. I think that they will be better prepared socially and emotionally for the full day that, that first grade has waiting for them. I recognize, however, that this continues to be a significant investment for this community. At this time, our proposal for full-day kindergarten, um, costs out at five, five hu- five hu- five-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, five-hundred dollars, half a million dollars. I'll break that out in detail that for you in the following slide. That includes a teacher for every student in kindergarten for a full day and paraprofessional support in each kindergarten classroom for a portion of the day, not for the full school day. It does not include significant construction or expansion of school, of school areas. We have the physical ability to absorb full-day kindergarten in our schools at this time. We do not have significant enrollment costs, uh, enrollment reductions to offset the cost. Some of our neighboring school districts, when they were able to implement full-day kindergarten, had drops in enrollment that were precipitous enough that allowed them to shift other elementary teaching positions to those first-grade positions. With a, excuse me, with a projected increased enrollment of six students next year, we do not have the capacity to shift staff positions into kindergarten. It does mean hiring new teachers. Additionally, uh, we have talked at length about, um, about local job embedded professional development. We have talked about the success that we have had with instructional coaches in the, um, literacy areas. Uh, this budget, uh, does include one math coach. We, at this time, expect that that position will be targeted at the middle level for a couple of reasons. The math work, uh, that we are doing around Common Core, uh, tends to experience a pitch point, uh, a pinch point in the middle grades. Uh, we see that that is an area where instructional support may be most immediately needed. And at the elementary level, with all of the other initiatives on, on the plate at this time, the idea of expecting every elementary teacher to work with the new evaluation system, the instruct, the literacy specialist and a math coach at their level would be much to expect at that level. We had hoped that this budget could include two math coaches, but at the level that we are at, it includes one. There are monies in this budget to continue to look at our practice and to continue to bring in outside organizations to look at what we do. Specifically, there are monies here, uh, to offset the costs of a look at how we support our highest achieving students and a new enrollment study. The enrollment study from which we've been working for years ages out, I believe it would be in our best interest to look at a continuing enrollment study. I will note that the study for high achieving students is not being, um, held off to next year. We expect that we will begin that work and might possibly be able to, um, fund that work through this year's budget alone. But should that work span the summer, we have built monies into next year's budget to continue that work moving forward in next year's budget. There are monies in here for instructional materials. Currently, uh, while we have instructional material lines that fall in the area of special education for students who have special needs, there was no standalone line item for materials to support students who are achieving at the highest levels. When those materials needed to be purchased, they were purchased out of the school instructional line broadly or out of special education. This money is here to create a standalone specific line for materials to enrich, um, the experiences of our students who are achieving at high levels and need stretch materials to continue to challenge them. It'll be housed within the special education budget. And any building principal who has a need for those materials will be able to tap that budget line. There are monies here to continue our exploration of the International Baccalaureate Program, which I believe ties to the idea of how we support, how we challenge, and how we offer, um, multiple paths for some of our highest achieving students, but a diverse, a more diverse consideration of who those high achieving students might be. The monies represented here would provide for a point-five release so that a teacher at the high school or an educator working at the high school, there's a point-five position for somebody to focus on the work that goes into, um, preparing for, um, collecting the research, communicating with the community and filing the paperwork should we continue to pursue international baccalaureate status. And there are monies here to continue training teachers. This year, we had the great good fortune to train a group of teachers because of support of the Guilford Fund for Education. There are monies in next year's budget to continue that training. This does not commit the school district to the International Baccalaureate Program, but it keeps the question open and allows the high school to continue the work that they have done and around which they've grown so much enthusiasm this year. There continues to be investment in site improvements. We have worked, um, uh, over the last two years to significantly improve our ability to better maintain our buildings, to proactively maintain our buildings. This year's investment is not in the, um, range of the investment made in the last two years. Uh, we are looking to, to begin to plateau that investment, but it is a significant investment in that area so that we can continue to care well and care properly for these buildings. And this budget also includes the cost for two full-time custodial increases. Those at this time are being considered as one full-time position here in this building. As we move into our new school, we will have, um, the work of moving into the new building and the new high school will be significantly larger and that increased square footage will need to be maintained. There is a halftime position to go into Adams. At times, we have been challenged by Adams. Adams is one of our oldest buildings. That building needs to be, um, cleaned properly and cared for properly so that we can get the most life out of that building and avoid issues that have, uh, tried us at Adams. And point-five would be, um, a night shift, a maintenance worker, somebody who could do the repairs and do the general maintenance work that needs to be done around the district so that we are preventively repairing and improving the schools before we have the catastrophic breakdown. All of those investments together represent a little bit under a million dollars. And I'll point out, it's important for us to, to name this, that full-day kindergarten represents more than half a million of what is a little bit less than a million-dollar list. So it is an important, uh, discussion that we need to have moving forward. Again, as I did with the efficiencies, let me take one of the most important ones, um, and break that out for you. The investment of full-day kindergarten, we arrived at the figure in this way. To staff every section of students with a teacher for the full day rather than with a teacher for the half a day means doubling our teaching staff in, in the kindergarten. It means an increase of six teacher full-time equivalents. It would mean adding six teaching positions. Budgeting those positions as, um, first-year teachers with benefits, um, that represents three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Supporting each of those kindergarten classrooms with a part-time paraprofessional, not a full-time paraprofessional, will additionally require six paraprofessionals. Currently, in our half-day kindergartens, the teachers are not supported by a paraprofessional. So to bring every existing section as well as the new sections up to point-five coverage requires six paraprofessionals. So that is why you see the same number, even though one is for full-time coverage and one is for part-time coverage. The paraprofessional cost would represent one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. We will need to refurbish some classrooms with appropriately sized furniture. We will need to purchase additional instructional materials. Right now, the materials get used for one group in the AM and a second group in the PM. We will need to double some of those materials. Simply doubling the amount of contact time with students is not the easiest thing in the world to do. We want to support our teachers as they do that work. We have been supporting them this year by having teachers get out and visit full-day programs, but there will be continued support. So there's money for professional development in there. And then the one efficiency, the one savings that we recognize is that by having the students mirror the rest of the elementary school day, there is no longer a need for a midday bus run. So we in fact project a savings of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in our transportation line. This is in addition to the transportation savings that we identified for special education. I want to point out that the class sizes we are projecting fall within the Board of Education's approved class sizes for kindergarten. We are not looking to bring these class sizes in at ten or twelve. In the board documents that speak to class size that we discussed last year, we talked about a range of fifteen to twenty being appropriate for kindergarten. We are looking to fall in the sixteen to nineteen range based on projections. There is some leeway in those projections for the assumption that some families who are now providing private full-day kindergarten for their students will take advantage of this, therefore the, the latitude. I will point out that if we see enrollment numbers, kindergarten is always a projection. We never know exactly how many students are going to enroll. Should these numbers increase above twenty, as I would with any elementary class size, I would be returning to the board late in the school year to talk about adding an additional section of kindergarten, and we would need to find a way to fund that within the existing budget. So while we're requesting six additional teaching positions, should the enrollment make it necessary, we would need to make an adjustment, and I would present that as a change to the staffing plan to you, uh, as soon as we have that information. I'll point out, we made a similar change in third grade this year because our numbers changed. For a total cost of five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, five-hundred dollars, a significant investment in this budget moving forward. Staffing, the way that those investments present themselves in staffing then, we are looking for increases in certified teaching staffing, and that's represented by the first colored band. The teachers doesn't show up so well, but the first blue band running horizontally. The full-day kindergarten that I just detailed will require the increase of six full-day kindergarten teachers. The math coach that I referenced falls within the, uh, the teacher's contract. We're asking for a math coach. I referenced almost in passing, that can continue to support the work that has been done in special education. We anticipate the need of an additional special education teacher next year. And we've talked about the point-five IB coordinator, the International Baccalaureate Program Coordinator. We do, however, have adjustments that are related to enrollment. We will be looking to reduce two FTEs at the high school this year. These are not two full positions. This will again mean looking at our scheduling, looking across subject areas and making small reductions of maybe one class or point-two FTEs in each subject area. By scheduling more efficiently, we do believe that we can recognize those reductions, and we do have the ability to reduce one other classroom, um, teaching position at Jones. So while we're asking to increase by eight-and-a-half teaching positions, we're decreasing by three teaching positions or offsetting by three teaching positions. If it were not for the increase associated with full-day K, we'd be asking for an increase of two-and-a-half teachers, but we'd be identifying a reduction of two teachers moving forward. It is kindergarten, and it is our decision around kindergarten that will affect the teacher's staffing moving forward. I mentioned that we're looking to add two custodial positions, and I mentioned that we're looking to add six kindergarten aides. So that does show an imbalance. We're looking to increase staffing for the first time since two thousand and eight in a significant way. And we're doing so, if we choose to do so, we will be doing so because of intentional decisions that we make moving forward. I just wanted to show this slide. It illustrates the, without looking at the dollars, it continues to illustrate the importance of this decision about full-day kindergarten that we're, we will be making in the next weeks. I also want to point out to the board and the community that the list of investments isn't everything that we wanted. It was not a wish list, as well as building this budget on efficiencies, trying to use the resources as best we could. We also made hard decisions, and there are pieces, there were requests made. There are investments that I feel we should be making in the school district that I don't feel we can afford to make at this time. Last year, we brought a technology integration specialist into the district. That position has been very successful at, has been instrumental in supporting, um, our preparation for the smarter balanced assessment at all schools and in our work around teacher and administrator evaluations. We told you last year that we expected to grow that single position into multiple positions. We had hoped to request a second technology integration specialist in this budget, but we are not. We don't feel that this is the time to make that request. When the elementary principals, when the elementary principals spoke to you passionately about full-day kindergarten, their initial proposal included a full-time paraprofessional at the kindergarten level in each classroom. We are not requesting full-time para-support at this time, although I think the principals still feel passionately about it. I do not feel that we can make that level of request at this time. I mentioned that we had hoped to request two math coaches. We will not be requesting a second math coach. There were requests from individual schools for additional school counselors. There were requests at every area for additional equipment that were deferred. And we had hoped to invest more than thirty-nine thousand dollars additionally into our site improvement line this year as we continue to try to build up that area. All of those were areas that we chose not to include in this budget. We simply did not feel that it was the right time to include those with the realities of the numbers that we were facing. Which means there's really two cost drivers when you come in, when you look at it. I mentioned earlier that salary was driving the cost of this budget. And for us, there are both, um, nondiscretionary components of salary. We have contracts, we have agreements with the staff. We need to continue to have the most talented people that we can get in the, in the programs that we offer now. That's part of our salary increase, and that's essentially nondiscretionary. There is an impact on the salary increase that is related to our decision around full-day kindergarten. So that decision will drive this budget moving forward. And the medical insurance increase will drive this budget moving forward. I've mentioned that we will continue to work on that, and we hope to continue to bring you information over the next weeks as you work on this budget. But for now, that's the best information we have, and that is the number that we need to work with. Those two items together, one which is discretionary and is an important decision facing us, one which is to some degree beyond our control, represent two-point-six million dollars of increase. And again, I'll remind you that the full budget that we're requesting is only a two-point-three million dollar increase. So those two areas really drive the increase. Which leave us for our next series of meetings, I believe, with a decision matrix. This budget, as presented in front of you, represents a total budget increase of four-point-three-eight percent. Should this board choose to move this budget forward but without full-day kindergarten, it would be an increase of three-point-four-four. it would be an increase of three-point-four four percent. Or, are there other thoughtful reductions and other work and other changes or modifications to this budget that this board can make to include or not to include the reduction of full-day kindergarten, to move that number to a place that we can bring this budget forward through the Board of Finance, and then ultimately to our voters at referendum? This, I think, represents our work moving forward. We're collecting materials to support this work as we meet again with you Thursday of this week. We have public hearings next week where the community will be invited out to comment, and then as many sessions as it takes for this board to deliberate and make the decisions necessary moving forward. And I thank you for the time put into this presentation, and I apologize again for the quality of my voice during this presentation. And I know we have many meetings ahead, but also happy to entertain questions at this time, Mr. Bloss.
Well, let me, let me make a suggestion that, since we deferred public comment earlier, if we can maybe go to public comment if there's questions about this at this point in the evening, does that make sense to Paul? If we could, if the lights maybe can turn a little bit. Maybe, I guess I'll make a couple of just brief observations while we're getting to next. The, you know, I want to thank, obviously, the administration and faculty.
Working with you and us on balance all of the issues that we're trying to balance, I do want to emphasize, though, the
Your proposal
Special ed outplacements is outstanding.
I think it has been many, many years, I've been on the board fourteen years, I don't recall there ever being a reduction in that line. And The most important part of it, maybe the most gratifying part of it, is that it is truly better services, better educational program at less cost. The parents of these children have, I think, are very enthusiastic about it, it saves transportation
Money, it's a better educational experience at a sharply reduced cost, and I think the faculty and your administration and Mrs. Brown have done just a fabulous job in that. And that's the, you know, the Futures Report, we talked about that as a board when we took the leap to get that report, and what was it going to lead to? Well, this is in part what it led to with some very good work on your part, so that's just outstanding, just terrific. And I do also want to emphasize that the medical insurance line is very much a work in progress. That is not the final number. And that is going to have an impact, I think, on the rest of our deliberations, but we just don't have all of the information we need. I think it would be fair to just describe generally what we're trying to do to come up with a clearer number in that. We are self-insured, so what this is, is effectively a prediction of what our expenses would be for next budget year. This is close to what the Anthem Blue Cross, our administrator for health costs, has recommended, but it's their recommendation, and we want to try to get some better data. We are talking to the Comptroller's Office, Mr. Lembo, about the state plan. We're talking to Learn about the Learn Cooperative that is a consortium of other schools around here. We are going to put out to bid both the administrative part of this, of our health insurance that Anthem Blue Cross currently does by contract, and also put out to bid just the contract generally, and see if health insurance, a more traditional health program, would make economic sense for us. So, you know, I think we're hopeful that that number is not the final number, and will go down. And if we're right about that, it better not go up, but if we're right about that, that may give us some flexibility in some of these other areas. So I want to just, I want to make sure everybody is aware that these, we still have to get a lot of information, and we do have to balance some other issues, and we'll try to do that as best we can. So, thank you for that presentation. Public questions or comments? And again, without prejudice to anybody, talking on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, that's really our major evening for that. Does anybody have any questions? Please, just come on up to the podium if you can, and just give us your name and street address and
Where's the podium?
Right there.
Hello, my name is Robert McAdams. I live at six Cornfield Lane in Guilford. My wife and I have two young daughters, two and four. We've been here about four years. And, we just wanted to thank Dr. Freeman, the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, and the Guilford community for the strong support that they have shown for full-day kindergarten. We understand that it is a high number, but with common core and some other aspects, we think that it's incredibly important for the community to realize that this could be a really excellent decision if it fits in the budget. And we understand that not everything fits in every budget, but there's a large part of the community, not just us with small children, but people with, you know, seniors and high schoolers and everyone that supports it, and we can bring the numbers. If we are lucky enough and we work hard enough to get it to the vote, we feel extremely optimistic that we win. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
Hi, my name's Clark and Kate, I live at eight ninety-five Maple Hill Road. I'm a graduate of Guilford Public Schools. I'm an educator, I'm a mother of two boys here in Guilford. I'm here tonight to represent a group of Guilford residents who are in favor of full day, to piggyback on what Robert just said. Some of us are moms, some of us are dads, some of us are grandparents, some of us don't even have kids. But all of us have the same feeling, and that we really feel that our town have access to quality full-day kindergarten. I'm not going to speak very long, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Dr. Freeman for including it in your budget, and urge you, the members of the board, to vote yes on the passage of this budget that includes the program. I want you to know that we're a hundred percent committed to helping pass this and launching a grassroots effort to pass the budget at referendum. As of today, we have nearly almost four hundred people who have signed our petition in favor of this, and we are ready to make calls, knock on doors, write letters, and encourage family, friends, and neighbors to vote. We're ready to do the work and can't wait to get started, and we look forward to having our membership attend the twenty-seventh to speak further on the matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this particular issue? Or on any budget-related issue, I suppose, I should, to be fair. I should just tell people, I think, also, that we did ask at our, in our initial budget meeting, we asked the administration for some of the data describing what the studies have shown. This has been a very heavily researched, a very, very heavily studied area. It's a little tricky because of the demographic differences in districts, and the demographic differences do matter, but we, we have been given by Dr. Freeman a stack of materials, studies from various researchers, and I think, I think we've all got some reading to do. I think I'm pretty well through it, but I think we, we need to really get into some of these studies and really, I think, settle what our expectations would be, and then we can talk about some of the rest of the numbers. Any other questions or comments on that? You know, I suppo, yes, please.
Brian McGloon, six twenty-two Mulberry Point Road. I'm actually standing here tonight as a thirty-four-year resident. Some people may recognize me because I have a role in town as the Economic Development person, but I'm really here to talk about being a resident like everybody else. I guess I just want to make sure we look at everything in total. We have a new high school coming down the pike in a couple of years that's going to drive tax increases that we're really not talking about here. But, you know, the estimates were, on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar market value, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar assessment, at least three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And that's just a year or two from now, it's right around the corner. I'm not going to argue the merits of the full-day kindergarten, whether we think we need it or not, but I think as the school board, you have an obligation to look at, there's certainly an emotional outcry, but we have to look at all the data to say, is it truly needed? And, I, you know, I'm not going to argue whether I think it is or it isn't, but I would like us to look harder at how we're going to organize and structure it. The additional headcount in full-time equivalents in teachers and paraprofessionals is the area, I guess I'd like to see looked at harder. I looked through some of the information I had on the website where contract levels allow, I think it's first to third grade, so I'm assuming kindergarten falls into that, at twenty-five students a class size. Our guidelines, and I might be off a little bit, are like between sixteen and twenty-two. And so we're talking about class sizes here in the sixteen to nineteen range, requiring six additional teachers and six full-time equivalents. I don't know all the certification for K to four, but I would assume it's relatively the same that a fourth-grade teacher, third or sixth, making an assumption, could be wrong, could teach at lower levels. And is there an opportunity to take a very broad, comprehensive look at redeploying class sizes? I know that varies within schools, I guess in the districts we have to talk about, but I would certainly love to see us do the full-day kindergarten with less, significantly less increase in headcount. We talk about the medical impact that's up here, that's not going to go away in adding six new heads. And, I'm not clear on this too, somebody told me, I'm not sure, that even our paraprofessionals that are part-time do get benefits. That might be an incorrect statement, I heard they do.
Not, not at this level. Not at halftime.
Okay, so maybe I had that off, but all I'm saying is, long-term, three years, five years, ten years down the road, the salary impact is certainly a significant piece. I think the medical portion could become much more substantial over the years when we look at what we're arguing and, you know, the debate and the increases. So I'd like to have us look at that. In the area of the special ed, and Paul, I'm not sure if I caught your numbers correct, but you had shown a headcount change of sixteen and a half people net in this budget. At one point, you commented about special ed was five and a half people, five and a half teachers, I think, and admin, and then you were adding another teacher. So is that net number addition to the sixteen and a half, or is that part of the sixteen and a half?
No, for that moment, I was speaking across two budgets, but I wanted to be fair. Much of the work that was done that is recognizing those savings was accomplished this year in the current budget. And in fact, we were, we increased staffing over what I spoke about here a year ago. We were able to generate the savings in this year's budget to afford those staff members, we carry them forward. So I wanted to show in an honest way that even though we've invested in a significant amount of people to support the programs, it is still generating a significant net savings in the area of special education. The only increase in this budget being proposed tonight to continue that work moving forward is one additional special education teacher over those working in the district today.
Okay, thank you. I guess the, and I guess it's in there as well, with, back in the fall when we published, we hired thirty-one new teachers. And I'm making an assumption, we, you know, we probably retired, or the more senior-level people retired, and we brought in lower level to mid-range, and I made a wild guess that we probably saved twenty thousand a head on thirty-one heads. And I mean, I'm guessing and estimating, but that's over six-hundred thousand dollars that I was expecting to see in the savings somewhere in the salaries, but, you know, when you come up with this net increases, it's consumed somewhere with all this redeployment of assets. And I guess I was anticipating maybe a little bit more savings there.
I can detail that further for the board, the next time I go at these numbers. We're compiling that information, and we'll be able to detail that. We also have to recognize that for a certain segment of the retiree population, there is a contractual separation cost that's associated with it. So sometimes the savings in retirement is not actually seen until the second year because of the ability, the contractual ability to have unused days recognized at times of separation.
And just for the record, that is out of existence as of nineteen ninety-three, I think is the year.
It's sunsetting, yeah.
Yeah, and so no board since nineteen ninety-three has approved that in a contract. So I, you know, to the extent that that was either a good idea or a bad idea, we can't take the weight for it.
Good. And I guess, this is a caution, I guess, about facilities, and with the, you know, when you're looking at the special ed increases in enrollment, the kindergarten potentially increases in enrollment, I'm just waiting for the classrooms, and next year, coming around and saying, we've got to rent modular classrooms or something like that, so.
We have been extraordinarily clear with the administration that the, if full-day kindergarten is going to be moved forward, there is not going to be a request for more classrooms. And I think Dr. Freeman has expressed his understanding of that.
Not the first time that caution has been voiced in my direction.
And now, to be fair, I mean, you know, that was an issue for us a couple of years ago. And do, is there the room? And we are told that there's empty space at the elementary schools, it would allow us to do this without adding on modulators or building. That is not going to happen. That, you know, we don't see any evidence that that would be needed if there was a huge enrollment. We don't think that there's going to be a huge enrollment spike, although we do want to put some money into next year's budget to do a more thorough study of it that we did, I don't know, eight years ago or so. And it actually wound up being quite accurate and was very helpful, and much different from the state's numbers, by the way. But, we are quite clear that there is no building relating to this.
No, I think that probably would be worthwhile. I mean, you noted, Paul, like in the last four years, we're down a hundred, hundred and some students.
But a hundred and forty students over the last four years, district-wide?
But even in data that's on the town website, the school website, going back to oh-five, the numbers look more like two-seventy-five, and if we go back even a few years, it's greater than three-hundred or more. So seeing six increases, it might, but that's a ripple on what the overall enrollment has declined over the last, say, eight or ten years. And you look at our neighboring towns of Madison and Branford, they're seeing same or similar kinds of declines.
Actually, Madison has had much more drastic declines. I don't know about Branford specifically, but Madison, I think, had enclosed a school because of enrollment declines. We are nowhere close to that.
And Madison's actual declines, I communicated with their superintendent today about their, the impact of full-day kindergarten in their budget. Their financial impact was lower because they anticipated two-hundred student decline last year. They were faced with the choice of laying off teachers or shifting them into the new full-day kindergarten program. They were projecting two-hundred, they didn't realize that decline, but we've never projected a two-hundred drop one year over the, over the other. As I've said, the last four years, we've got less than a two-hundred drop. Yes, you keep going further back, that number can continue to grow, but we don't, we don't project losing two-hundred students in one year, we don't see that. I do think we need to extend the end of that survey out. The demographic information that I'm looking at now broadly, not specific to Guilford, suggests that we're going to continue to have some enrollment declines, and so that is an opportunity to continue to watch those enrollment adjustments and continue to make those adjustments. We will budget and we will program for the students who come in our doors. If the numbers begin to drop dramatically, we need to make the changes to absorb that. We will not keep teachers in classrooms because they're on the payroll. We keep teachers in classrooms because there are students in front of them.
Well, just as a couple, if I'm, now maybe I am using my economic development hat, just for information, you probably have all this in front of you. You know, our population overall in the town has remained relatively flat at about twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred people. Average age has gone from forty-four years to forty-six-six, I think, the last time it was looked at, which is in the last couple of years. When I look ahead at projects that I'm involved in, and things that are going to happen, development in the next three to four to five years, it's predominantly over fifty-five type housing, and condos, apartments, things like that, that are obviously suggesting, in most cases, probably won't include kids. I know in my case, it won't include kids. But my point is, I think the enrollment is going to be continued to decline, and so doing a more, a more official study instead on the back of a napkin probably is in order.
Yeah, and we, you know, we're very open to that, and, I mean, we've proposed it, it's in your budget. And, you know, you mentioned, though, one of the issues, I do want to just reiterate that we've talked about it, and I just want to make sure. The class size issue is an extraordinarily complicated issue in Guilford, because each of, we have four elementary schools, that's unusual for a town our size. We're in a position that basically for each grade, you're either going to have three sections and have a lot of kids, or you're going to have four and have a few kids. There's no way to do it in the middle. In other words, you know, you can just do it on the numbers, like if there were fifteen kids in a, in a section, and twelve kindergarten teachers, that would be a total of a hundred and eighty-five students registered. Well, we haven't had a hundred and eighty-five in the last five years. They've been They've been more enrolled in kindergarten. Now, the range, though, has been from two-sixty-five to one-ninety-six. It's a huge swing. And you did mention it's a possibility that you'd have to come back and add another teacher, maybe at one school. But there is also the possibility of coming back and, let's say that you've got a hundred and eighty-five. You could come back and say, you know what, we don't need to hire six.
Exactly.
We're going to hire five. And that's equally possible. But the kindergarten projections are very hard for us because they're, literally, until you walk in the door, there's no pre-registration requirement. There's no, we ask for people to pre-register, but you have to educate them if they're in your district on the first day of school. So, you know, I, we're, we're doing the best we can in terms of trying to project it out, but I think it is a good idea to try to have a little more, a little more thoughtful analysis of it, a little more demographically oriented analysis. And we also hope to have some economic development in town that would relieve the tax burden on residential property, by the way.
At two-point-three million dollars, we'd need five Costcos in one year to cover that increase for one year.
Well, we're-
And that's not going to happen in this town. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but it is a real big challenge. Most of our small retailers and small service businesses, you know, they add eight, ten, fifteen thousand dollars to our tax rolls. So it takes loads and loads of those to have any kind of effect.
Well, you know, one of the-
It's almost a rounding error.
You know, one of the things that we've, and I don't know whether this is, I don't know how to take this into account, frankly, but one of the things, all of our neighboring towns do full-day kindergarten now. Does that make Guilford less attractive or more attractive to people that are thinking about moving in? Does it hurt us with attracting young families? Is that a town interest to attract young families? Is it a town interest to hold taxes down? You know, those are all interesting issues that you put into the mix, but we are-
And my, my reaction is anecdotal, not scientific. I, and I watch kids that graduate from the Guilford school system that are now moving to Killingworth or Clinton or towns like that. I frankly, the full-day kindergarten usually doesn't come up in the discussion. It's the house cost and the house tax and maintenance is what is driving our former Guilford people, students, to those other communities. I mean, right now, the median price in Guilford is three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. The average price is about four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And our generally twenty-somethings, early thirty-somethings, that's putting them out of range. And you look at Clinton and Killingworth and some of the other communities, those housing costs are below ours. So it might, it might bill. I don't know, but I know, I've been talking to enough that have bought in other towns, that's the feedback they've given me.
Every real estate agent I know, the first thing out of his or her mouth is Guilford has the great schools.
That's- I don't disagree. We have the greatest schools. My three daughters all graduated from here. They all went on to get degrees. My oldest daughter's in the middle of her doctorate program. My younger, middle daughter has her master's. My youngest daughter's an IT person. I have no qualms or, everybody talks about the total schools. Is it because we have full-day kindergarten that makes the total school? I question that from my perspective.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment about enrollment. As a pediatrician, I know that the birth rate correlates with the economic situation in a community. And as we enter a recession, the birth rate goes down. As we come out of a recession, the birth rate goes up. And we're seeing that now at the hospital, that there are more babies born this year than there were last year. As that translates into pre-K and K and enrollment, I could predict, without fancy studies, that four, five years from now, our enrollment is going to go up. It has to, because more babies are being born.
Well, remember, though, Alan, last winter was a very cold winter, so.
Which makes more babies being born.
A little help there.
If it's all the same, can we do the study?
I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
That's okay.
Excuse me. Dr. Moore is trying to talk, I guess.
No.
He's blinking the lights.
He's turning it on and off, I think.
I think he-
I think it's a connection problem.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, though.
Thanks, Brian.
I can't see Dr. Moore's blinking lights from here, so.
No.
Is that at all creepy?
No, it's blinking.
I'm determined that when the camera flips up, that's when he's there.
Okay.
He's been coming in and out.
All right. Anybody else have any thoughts about the budget? Please.
Nate Jacobson, fourteen-seventy Long Hill Road. Proud to be raising four, four young children in the, in the town of Guilford. Overall, with this, obviously, very compelling arguments for each item that is an increase to, to the budget. You guys certainly have an unenviable job to try to sort this out with the emotion attached of having a young family, myself and many of the other, other people here. To me, it's really a no-brainer to add the kindergarten. From looking at it from a financial point of view, we're all seeing the increased taxes. It's also, you're doing that balancing act. What can, what can we afford? What, what makes sense? I think that I ask you guys to, to look at this a little bit more from a historical point of view, or probably not historical, but more an outlook view on what the future's going to bring with, with education and not just the details of this particular budget yet. I would say, if not this year, when is it going to happen? I think everything that the world of education is facing, the increased expectations, the common core, it's only a matter of time before every school in the United States has full-day kindergarten. You're seeing in the state of Connecticut, I believe it's a hundred and thirty-plus out of a hundred and sixty-eight communities that have gone to the, the full-day K, many of them years ago. I would assume that the town of Guilford is going to add it within the next, next five years. When you look at the, at the little things, they're not little things, but when you look at all the details in the budget, there's a compelling argument for all of them. And obviously, there's a finite amount of dollars and resources. But if not now, when, when is it going to be? When is full-day kindergarten going to be the priority, the priority for the town of Guilford? For yourselves, the Board of Education? I would assume it's going to happen in the next five years. So I'm going to ask you not to, do your best. It's obviously your responsibility to look at each argument in the way as you deliberate. But keep in mind the outreach view. When is going to be the time for Guilford to add full-day kindergarten? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments on the budget? Anybody? Does anybody have any comments about the, the testing issue, since, I don't want to kind of, that wasn't exactly on the agenda, but, you know, whatever. Does anybody have any thoughts about that? I know Mr. Freeman is going to talk to Mr. Messeny about it in the evening and then rolling out the plan further, so. Nobody? Okay. All right, then, we are, I think, Dr. Freeman, are we done? Or do people have questions or comments at this point? Board members?
I have one comment. You know, the one large item on the, in the budget that really doesn't help anybody, certainly not kids, is the health insurance line item, which is, by my calculations, is an increase of twenty-five-point-three percent over this, this year. I did look at what the U.S. Congressional Budget Office projects for premium increases. And for fiscal year 2014, they project a ten to thirteen percent premium increase for the country. And I did some simple arithmetic that if we had a ten percent increase instead of a twenty-five percent increase, that would give the bottom line, including all-day kindergarten and including everything that Dr. Friedman is asking for here, of only a two percent increase over this fiscal year. And then I would be in the position of looking at you, Dr. Friedman, and say, what do we add? Not what do we take away? So I think that our mandate as a board is to look at what is in the best interest of kids and to look at what's in the best, sound educational policy. And if we could find ways, and we talked about this in the Operations Committee, of decreasing our line item for health insurance down to the national level, we would be in excellent fiscal shape. We would meet the requirements that Mr. McGowan is talking about. We would meet the requirements that the parents are talking about. We feel passionately, some of us feel passionately about all-day kindergarten. And I think we'd be in great shape, and that, to me, is our mandate. If the national increase is ten to thirteen percent, we need to get down near that level. Because I don't know of any other places in this, in this country that is asking for a zero increase in health insurance.
Other, other questions, comments for now?
I do have a question. The second math coach listed under Investments Deferred, were we to incorporate that into the budget, would that also be a five-through-eight coach? Or is, is that a question not worth asking if it's not being considered?
I think most likely. I think we were considering one at each of the element, the-
Each of the middle?
Middle schools.
Okay.
And I think if we are left with only one, the focus will probably shift to seven, eight. When I talked about that pinch point at the middle level, it really becomes most extreme in the seventh and the eighth grades. But that's our thinking at this moment.
Okay.
If we get to a point that Dr. Myers is asking, what can we put back? We might be able to put the-
Right. No, no, I just, it just, it's helping me to understand specifically what we're not including.
Still middle level, but probably higher middle level. You know, around that, around that seventh and eighth grade year where, where the decisions are getting difficult and the instruction is beginning to become more abstract.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else on the board before the twenty-seventh? I'd encourage anybody who has questions or that can't be answered off the cuff to get the questions to Dr. Freeman and Mr. Bowden before the twenty-seventh. So, you know, for example, there's a question about how many particular people in a bargaining unit are in the health plan and how many are not, whatever. Let's, that's, you know, let's try to get that through at a time so we aren't, so we aren't floundering around. And I assume people, are people staying for the rest of the meeting or kind of not so much? Well, why don't we take a short recess and let everybody filter out if we can. So we'll go, Mike, we'll take a short recess.
I'll go retrieve my water. Sorry.
All right, we're back after a short recess. The, just to update, Dr. Freeman, if you would, on the budget timeline, I know that you've mentioned the public input sessions are going to be January twenty-seventh and January twenty-eighth at Adams, the chorus room at seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty. I know that we're meeting with the district leadership team this Thursday at six at Baldwin.
At Baldwin, yes.
And I think I'd encourage everybody to, as much as we can, get through those studies on full-day kindergarten because that is kind of the time to talk to the principals of the elementary schools about, about, you know, the efficacy of this and benefits of it.
That would be an important time to discuss things like the math coach, where that would happen, the international baccalaureate program at the high school, certainly full-day kindergarten. You'll have access to the leadership team, questions about special education. That'll be your time to have access to the folks that contribute, excuse me, contributed to putting this together.
Okay. And what's after? I know we've got a meeting with the Board of Finance.
Joint meeting with the Board of Finance, January the twenty-first.
January twenty-first?
It's a full week for us next week.
At the community center, I assume?
Yes.
Yes, at six.
Before their meeting?
And, and this board is scheduled to approve a budget, if ready, on February third. Now, that's certainly within your control, and you can certainly move that. But at this point, that's what we're targeting for budget approval from this board.
Okay. It's been pushed out from time to time, so, you know, if we have to, we will.
A public hearing on the full budget, including the town side, scheduled on March fourth. That is generally scheduled in the community center. An annual, excuse me, with an annual meeting and a referendum on dates to be determined in April.
Okay. Good. All right. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Eight-point-three is update on the Board of Ed retreat.
I just wanted to remind the board that we have a Saturday retreat scheduled for Saturday, January twenty-fifth. We will be meeting in the community room at Guilford Public Library, the room located directly behind Lathrop House. And we've put together an agenda for us. We're not bringing in an outside, outside facilitator. It'll just be the board and myself, and I'll be sharing with you some work and activities that we've done with the leadership team, taking us through a series of the beliefs, the philosophies that underpin much of what goes into this and leads to the decisions that we've been making, and ending with a discussion of our vision and mission and priorities. We will have continental breakfast. We'll have lunch together. We hope to have you all out by three. We kick off with our, our book club reading. So I do want to remind everybody that you received a copy of Mindsets by Carol Dweck, and we should all have that completed by the time we sit together on the twenty-fifth.
Well, that's a useful reminder.
And I, and I'll apologize for not reminding everybody at the previous, the previous time we sat.
What, when will that meeting start?
Nine to three. We'll meet at eight-thirty, I think, for continental breakfast, and we'll kick off our conversations at nine. So I'll have an agenda out to all of you, but wanted to remind you publicly that you have a book to read.
Thank you so much.
Now you're putting on your teacher hat.
I will tell you, it is a very quick read. In many ways, she, she has a style that is maybe similar to Malcolm Gladwell. So it is a quick read, and I think that you'll find it engaging, and I think you'll recognize many of our students in the pages.
I did just get an email from Dr. Moore. He has signed off. He apparently, whatever time it is, over on the other side of the world, it's not-
Eighteen hours ahead.
I don't even know what that means. The, all right, anything else, Dr. Freeman?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Nine-point-one, board agenda, personal items. There are two to ratify the appointments of two halftime kindergarten teachers, one at Jones, one at Lakes, Emily Thomas and Misty Moda. Is there a motion to approve those, ratify those appointments?
Seconded.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Nine-point-two, act on a resolution relating to the update to the four-fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan. As I understand it, Mrs. Renner, what did we decide on that at the Finance Committee?
We discussed it in the Operations Committee, and we have a recommendation for the full board that we'd like to make. There's a Section four-fifty-seven plan, which is like a 401K plan. It's at no cost to the district, so the employees defer a portion of their salaries pre-tax. And from time to time, we have to tweak it to make sure it stays compliant with IRS requirements. And also, we've been asked to approve a change to the plan to make the retirement age the same as it is in our other plans, basically. So what we agreed to recommend to the board is the following motion. To authorize the superintendent or his designee to take any action necessary to ensure that the existing deferred compensation four-fifty-seven plan will continue to comply with Internal Revenue Code requirements and to amend the plan by changing the normal retirement age for the purpose of the final three-year prior to normal retirement age catch-up option from seventy and a half to sixty-five.
Okay, so that's a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. And now just, and that complies with what we think our duties would be under federal law? In other words, everybody's happy with that, the beneficiaries are happy with that, the administrators are happy with that, the financial people are happy with that. Everybody's happy.
I think that satisfies all constituencies.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Nine-point-three is to act on the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school calendar. I think you had some, I know you put out some-
Put out a survey.
Yeah, a survey on that. And what were the results?
We sent out a survey to every home that has students in attendance in school, and we received twenty-one responses.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes. The most significant one, seven respondents felt that we should reinstate the full-week-long February break. But I will remind the board that when we polled specifically on February break, we received over a thousand responses, and fifty-seven percent were in favor of maintaining the shorter break in order to have a, a more reasonable summer release. The second-largest response was the suggestion of moving, moving April break later into The second-largest response was the suggestion of moving April break later into the calendar. I received a phone call directly in my office, and in fact, at the most recent LEAR meeting, a number of other districts have proposed moving the April vacation a week later. And so, the regional calendar template that we are discussing has recommended a change that is the second-most popular request from those people who chose to respond to the survey. All of the other responses that we received were only individual comments. And so, what I would suggest is that, after discussing it at some length last time, recognizing that we are attempting to align with the regional template as best we can, I would ask the board to adopt the calendar as presented with one change, to move April vacation to the week of April 13th through the 17th. It uncouples it from Friday the 3rd and pushes it later and keeps us in alignment with the regional template, which has changed since the time that we prepared our calendar. And I would suggest that with 21 responses, either the community is unaware of the calendar conversation or satisfied with the calendar that we asked them to review on the website. We sent out a push notification to say that the calendar is on the website, please take a look, and please send us your comments, and we only received those 21 comments.
I did get a comment, somebody who did propose, was in favor of a full-day February vacation.
A full week, yeah.
A full week, I mean, I'm sorry.
We received-
And then, taking away some holidays like Martin Luther King Day and I think a couple of other tweaks, but.
I received a communication, not the same one, requesting February vacation again.
Right. And you know, it's becoming less and less popular in school calendars, particularly after the last few very challenging winters. I very much hesitate. What will end up happening is that we will have another very difficult storm season or winter, or both, as we did last year. And then, we end up canceling days in the April vacation, and we end up with very unproductive time. We end up with time where people are missing. We have high absentee rates among staff as well as students, and it becomes less efficient. So, I know it is changing tradition. I know it's difficult to let go of, but I have a very hard time recommending to you that we put full day, a full week of February break back into the calendar, particularly with only seven requests. I would not recommend, I would not recommend it.
And there is a unique reason to adopt this calendar, and that is that if all goes right, you're moving from this current building into the new building in the summer after that. We can't be in school on June 30th.
Specific to, right, specific to this year, putting February break back, this would not be the right time to do it, because we need to maximize the length of our summer in the summer of '15. Absolutely right.
So, I am, without prejudice to reconsidering next year, this is not the year to put it, it seems to me. I'm not, I don't, I'm-
You're absolutely right.
So, Dr. Freeman, would that change? Is there a motion that we adopt the proposed budget? Would that change?
I'm sorry, can I, can I just ask one quick question? The April vacation request to move it ahead, is it purely on that uncoupling? And interested that many people, albeit relative, to the 21 that responded at all, wanted to push it ahead? Was it solely about uncoupling it? Is there something else we didn't understand?
No, I think it was about trying to push it a little bit later into the month, trying to center it a little bit more. And I think some of them may have already been anticipating the fact that other districts weren't falling into the week of the 6th, they were falling into the week of the 13th. I think that people are beginning to appreciate the effort being made to align April breaks across neighboring communities. It's a little crazy for neighboring communities to have different April vacations.
Which I get. I mean, my only thought is if we are and have moved away from February vacation, having the April break earlier rather than later gives a more even distribution of the semester.
That's why, that's why we put-
This is not an important hill to fall on.
No. And that's why we placed it there, and that's why we tied it to, we thought tying it to the 3rd was in fact tying the, it gave families that extended weekend, but it just wasn't all that popular.
Yeah, I was just curious what drove that request.
Quite honestly, in the other districts, what I heard, a lot of what drove it was that it is traditionally the second week in April, and a lot of people have timeshare plans already. And so, anecdotally, that was some of what I heard. I did not hear that in our local survey results, but I heard it from a lot of other places.
Who plans that far in advance? I mean, honestly.
Not me.
No kidding. I mean, anyway, yes.
I think it was at last meeting in December when we received the calendar, we talked about it very briefly, but I believe Mrs. Renner brought up the thought of children in session in school on voting day. And I don't know that we ever, I sort of remember talking about it, but I don't know. I thought we should, just wanted to bring it up before we rolled in the calendar.
At this time, we can, in an election year, have voters in the buildings twice, because there's the actual Tuesday in November where that occurs, and then there's usually going to be the referendum day in April. And we don't know that date until it gets set. So, one day would be really hard for us to try to capture and anticipate when that would happen. What we have been doing is we have been working around trying to make voting as convenient and as secure as we can possibly make it. So, currently, we vote in four locations in the district. There's actually discussion about one. I've been engaged in some discussion with the town about whether that may be reduced to three moving forward. In two of those locations, we're able to physically separate the voting area from the rest of the building, so the gymnasium can be physically locked off from the rest of the school. The voters come into the gym and leave the gym, and any access between the two is locked off and is secured. We increase police presence at all schools on Election Day. Two of the buildings, because of egress codes, we don't have the ability to physically separate the spaces, and in each of those buildings, we have a police officer stationed on property for the entire time that students are in session. So, you know, we try to manage it, and we try to maintain it, and we try to make it as safe and convenient as possible. It's not ideal, but unless we can find alternative locations, it's going to be a challenge to close the school on two days, and then we would be adding those two days later into the school year.
Does the town have any kind of, I haven't been around long, or been involved long enough to know, but does the town keep any statistics on whether people, I mean, aside from presidential elections, are people unlikely to come vote if they have to go to the fire station versus Baldwin?
I can answer that.
I believe there are some.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was one vote that was done on a town-wide basis at one polling place, and that was to purchase the East River Preserve. It was a disaster in terms of lines, parking. It was done at the fire station, as I recall.
It was, the fire station.
And it was the one, one station for the entire town.
The traffic was hideous. It was a good thought, because you know, the theory was in a referendum, you weren't going to have 5,000 people turn out, you were going to have somewhere around 3,000 people turned out, and I think that's what the number was in that area. But it was, I think, I think the town, the town side leaders are not willing to try that again. It's a good idea, it was a good idea then. But I would also note that there's probably, how are we doing on the feedback there? Is that? It may well be, you know, you say two, there may be more than two. I mean, putting aside the budget-
Yes.
You're almost guaranteed to have primaries this year for statewide offices, or some statewide offices, anyway. And that's in September. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not-
I mean, I spent a lot of time at polling locations this fall, and you know, standing in front of a school and hearing children running around outside at recess while, you know, people are driving all over the parking lot, running in and out of the building, police presence or not, it's a little-
It's, it is not ideal. But you know, like North Guilford, there's only two buildings in North Guilford that, you know, could work, the fire station and the school, you know? And the fire station has its own access problems, parking, in egress and so forth. It's just, there's no good solution, frankly.
They used to use the fire station.
I know, I know, but they, but the town, I think it was either Sam Bartlett or Carl Balistraci came to us and said, you know, can we do it at the school? It's just not safe to do it at the fire station, to have cars coming out of, that was your voting place, of course, for many, many years. It just wasn't safe to have cars dumped out there, you know?
So, I mean, we could make that change in the calendar, and we could always keep the Tuesday in November off. It would add one day to the end of the calendar, but it wouldn't eliminate voting in the schools. It would only reduce voting when kids are in schools. So, with that in mind, I chose to just do the best we could with the situation and not split, split that piece.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? Did you make a motion to?
I did.
Yeah, I bet you did. Is there a second to it?
Yep.
All right. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right.